Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one mission under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. See, number two, approval of minutes from February 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Lead the second. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For selectmen comments. I'd just like to talk a little bit about our experience over the last few days, a little power outage that we had. Eversource was able to meet their goal of getting everybody back by 11 o'clock last night. I know because I got my power back at 9:30. But, you know, we're facing another storm now, and I think we're gonna...I know I've -- I read this morning that they have -- the crews that came into town are gonna stay here. And so I just drove past Eversource, and there's five trucks from another company outside their gate. Their yard is full of trucks, so at least we're ready for whatever happens. But it's supposed to be, you know, depending on who you talk to, this next event could be as bad as what we had the other day. So just ask for everybody's patience. It's not Eversource doing this, it's nature. And I think they're doing as good of a job as they probably can. If you saw some of the trees that came down over the last week, there were some really big trees, there's some really -- a lot of damage that it brought about, a lot of lines down. And, you know, the big delay with Eversource through this whole thing was they can't take trees off of live wires. They have to get the wires shut down. And getting that information to the crews is, you know, is difficult, and safety first is their number one rule. You know, I know a lot of people weren't thrilled with what happened, but I think that they did as well as they could under these circumstances, and hopefully they will do better going forward.
It was out-of-state crews that came in? Is that -- I heard Maine and Canada.
Yeah.
Pretty impressive.
New York State.
Yeah.
So, anyway. Number four, citizens' comments.
Professor Obrath, 34 years old.
Do you have the mic?
Yeah. Please do.
It's on? It's up?
Oh.
Is it on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I would like to address issue eight on the agenda. Again, Academy Street. After the public hearing you folks had, I sat down, and you know, I've been involved in this for many years, and I sat down and reassessed where my own personal feelings were coming from. And I went back and took a look at some of the previous studies to see what direction we had gone in on those, and I would like to propose to you folks, for your consideration, something that you might think about as you move forward. Back in 2012, there was a report issued on that, and I have a copy here that I'm going to give to you, and I don't intend to go through it. What I would ask you to do is to take a look at the last page. And I just want to use that as a point. And the last page shows a suggested cost for rehabbing that building if we were to keep it. If you recall at the public hearing, not many people really addressed the four proposals that were put on the table. Most of the people were concerned about, we should probably keep the building and the property as town property. And that was a number that was put out after the 2012 study. And what happened was, after that study was completed, a group was put together to determine what the actual cost might be. And I have copies of the 2016 report from that group. And again, I highlighted things for you I would ask you to look at, but just again, turn to the last page. And you'll see there, instead of the $8 million plus that was mentioned in the 2012 study, the number is maybe as high as $13 million. So on the basis of that, I would suggest that in order to present to the public the options that, number one, came from the RFP study, and also the option of retaining the building and the property under ownership of the town and using it for some other purpose, that we have to have a number for that second proposal. And I don't know whether you could reconstitute the group, the 2016 group that prepared that second study, and they never completed it, by the way. That's the minutes of their last meeting. Because immediately after that, the decision was made not to pursue the Arts Alliance program. So in order to go to the public, I think you have to present two proposals to them. Number one is the best of the four RFPs, and also what it would cost the community for retaining the property, and do a cost-benefit analysis. If we had done that with the airport, the vote might have turned out differently. Because most people think we paid $9 million to the airport, and that's all that came out of a taxpayer's pocket. But the 20-year bonding will end up with interest payments of over $3 million. So the cash payment is about $12 million for that. If they had developed 127 condominiums on that property, it was estimated the tax revenue would have been over $1 million a year. So during the 20-year bonding period, that would have been $20 million in revenue to the town. So the cost of the airport property is actually somewhere in the area of $20 -- $30 to $35 million. And I think we should do a cost-benefit analysis for both proposals that I just talked about for the Academy property. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments?
Walter Litten. First, I think the town's response to this -- these storms was very, very good. Both the police department and the administration of towns was very good. But there's a couple of things I'd like to mention today. One is that you consider a no-confidence vote in Eversource, totally unprepared for these storms that we had, didn't call in additional people until it was a little late. I've learned previously that at one time in the last 10 years, we had five Northeast -- not Northeast, Eversource people in town that worked in the town of Madison, down to two on a regular basis. That's one of those. Number two, I've come before you previously in regards to the bullet-ridden sign outside of Moxie's. I haven't talked about this since the latest gun violence in Florida, but I would like this board to go on record, you haven't done it yet, but I'd like you to go on record that you're opposed to this. I also -- I'm gonna go again to the Chamber of Commerce. And the other thing is, I know the board has no official response or duties to the Board of Ed, but I've also been trying to get pre-employment drug testing done on all members of the Board of Education. And it's been stonewalled so far by Mr. Scareese and by the Board of Education. The interesting thing is, every prospective employee from the town of Madison gets drug tested. That includes the police and other areas. The people that drive town trucks that have a CBL license are required to have random drug testing. Why shouldn't the members of the Board of Education at least be drug tested prior to being hired? There's no union contract that prohibits that. They're not members of the union when they're looking to be hired, so. I would hope something gets done for the kids in this town. The teachers and the people in the school system spend more time with the kids than parents do. So I would like your support in regards to this. Again, I think the town did a wonderful job town-wise in regards to this storm. I would add, if you can get the snow off the sidewalks downtown tonight before the other snow hits. It's very, very frozen and icy down there. I just came from there a little while ago. So if there's any way, I know we're probably spending a lot of money on overtime, but I think it's worthwhile so nobody gets hurt. And we don't know how much snow is coming for sure, but it looks like it's gonna be somewhat of a juicy. So thank you for letting me talk. I would definitely urge you in regards to this signage with the bullet holes right outside of a bar. Doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. I'd like you to be public about it, and urge it to sign be removed. And I thank you all.
Thank you.
Lynn Charles, five Nichols Hill Drive. I just want to give a shout-out to all of you, and especially to you, Mr. Banish. I saw in your article in the paper, your comment that, "From the start, I've been committed to breathing new life into Academy." And it really happened. And I want to use that expression that people say, "Madison is woke on this issue." And I am a proud New Englander now, because I can say how much I enjoyed those hearings, and how impressed I was with the spirit of democracy, people standing up, and the consensus building. And I think what I came away from it was that we came -- we ended up in a place different from where we started. I would have never imagined from that first meeting that anything else would have happened, but we would have come to some decision about which developer was the best. But instead, there was a real discussion about, "Well, wait a minute. You know, this is all five acres." And then the next thought, you know, "Wait a minute. This public space," and a word I really hadn't heard before in connection to Academy, "this public space is deeply important to us." That was a complete surprise to me. I also thought it was interesting that there was -- there were a lot of comments about the numbers that this would generate in terms of our taxes. And people, you know, coming up and saying, "Wait a minute, I don't think this is worth it." Sort of like the American Express commercials. Do you know, this -- the cost of this, this, this event is X amount of dollars, but in reality, the cost is priceless. And I think that's what people came away from this discussion with. So, you know, finally, I guess I want to encourage this kind of democratic grassroots participation that you have already engendered, and that I think has been so successful, and to continue to look, to realize that there might be solutions outside of the box. Do you know, that with Island Avenue, this was something else I didn't expect to enter into the conversation, that, you know, there might be new developments with Island Avenue School being used. So I just want to say, on this Monday morning, after five days without electricity, I'm happy and hopeful, and a proud grassroots citizen of Madison. Go Madison.
Anybody else? Okay, number five, update from Department head, Beach and Rec.
We're waiting for the snow to go away so we can get going with our spring sports. Even though we have little light in at the end of the tunnel, it always closes, it's been closing down on us. As soon as the weather breaks, we'll be out in full force, getting all the fields set for all the youth sports. One upside of these last couple of storms, we did gain sand back at the Surf Club because of the direction of the winds and everything, so we got some back.
We switched them too.
So this storm will also help. But we went -- the department went through an upgrade. As far as our software goes, it is still RectTrack, we're not Systems, but they changed their complete format, so it's a completely different animal to us. We're getting a grasp on it, and I think it'll be a positive for the community. There haven't been too many problems on the website as far as people registering online.
They're more user-friendly.
I believe so. In our application, we used to have the different modules. There was activities, passes, rentals. Now they all, all those different modules talk to one another, as far as household balances go and everything else, so it's a little bit more streamlined. Again, it was a completely different format. It was a huge undertaking, and I appreciate the community's cooperation when we're closed for the week, but we just had to do it because it was a nightmare. Other than that, we're getting ready for the spring, and the summer's coming, we're going through applications, seeking applicants for various jobs.
Quick question. I was always concerned this time of year about where the frost line is, you know, and how deeply frozen the earth is for the fields to open up. Because if it's frozen, it takes longer for them to thaw out, for the water to drain through, so the fields get sloppy and they're croaking off of it.
Correct.
Where does that stand issue do you now?
We haven't done any test forings. It's mainly getting the temperature released down, so it'll drain down. Where, as I said, we get out there, we're out on town campus a couple of weeks ago. We're up and out there a little bit, but the infields are suiting. So it's just gonna -- the sun's gonna help.
Stands with the cornfield?
We're waiting until we can get out there again. The mound will be done, and as soon as it dries up, we'll be dragging it out to the infield, and we should be good.
So it's gonna open on time?
Should. It's a big fun.
Open on time.
If we keep on getting snow squarped, you know. But, yeah, we only have a few days of work once we can get on it. And outdoor industries is gonna be back doing the perimeter, reseeding spots that were washed out and smoothing everything else, so.
How about JC?
JC, as soon as we can get out there. We have both infields, we need to put clay down, and one mound is almost completely rebuilt. The other belt, other mounds in the process.
They'll open on time, do you think?
Yeah, as soon as we can get out there.
Yeah, that's great.
And those JC is both, instead of both being a 60-foot diameter, they're both 50s, 70s.
They look amazing. They look really good.
So all other fields, you know, soccer across?
That Saw Meadow, as of yesterday, was thawing out, so they'll get there. They'll be ready.
Scott, when the Beach and Rec Commission looks at the programs and services, what's the biggest unmet need in town that the commissioners feel still exists?
We haven't had a commission in a couple of months now, so.
Well, further.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to meet the needs when they come across. We still, we have a younger set with the preschoolers that we're feeding. The one, one spot that's always been a lower spot is the high school, middle school, high school age, because their interests are so vast, it's difficult to narrow down what they really want. We had a very successful Friday night basketball group lead this past winter. Kids, high school kids helped organize it and ran it.
Nice.
And they had a lot of fun. So we were there up until 10 o'clock on Friday nights where the guys, kids could come in and play basketball and lead, and it was pickup, so.
Over the weekend, we used the gym as a shelter.
Yes.
Is that a direct thing?
Yes. As it, as it always does. Some people were upset even though we had signage. They couldn't understand it, but.
But for the first time, since we've been opening the shelters the last several times, we did actually have like five or six people.
Yes, yeah. I think the dance studio worked out well, once we moved them over there.
Yeah.
It's just a smaller space. Having them out in the gym itself, it's kind of vast, so we tried to make it a little bit more homey. We have TV down there, so they can connect with the news and what have you, so it worked. I think it worked out well. People were already in and out, taking showers through the weekend.
Yeah.
We're back to our normal operation today, but.
Good day.
For today. And there's still potable water outside in case people still don't have electricity or running water, so.
I heard one comment, and I think we should remind people if we're gonna get the water out of the hose here, to let it run for a little while, just to clear the water that's been laying in the hose.
Yeah, they are the white, the white hoses, which are better for the drinking water. They were brand-new hoses. Most of the time, it was people getting it for flushing toilets and what have you, but absolutely.
Scott, relative to the issue that's gonna happen this summer with Hammond Asset with the open access, have you guys started talking about that at all in terms of the impact on our town beaches?
I don't, I don't know what that impact is gonna be, because it's actually free to the people to go into the state, where people were getting frustrated with the lines last year with getting paid, and they were seeking other venues out.
Right.
I don't think we were completely overrun, because we, you know, on the weekends, we are $40 per non-residence. That's not Madison residents, that's not state. So, I mean, we were busy. In honesty, a lot of the people that were coming in loved our beach and respected it. Unfortunately, even more so than some of our residents.
Interesting.
Because they don't want to over-stat, you know, the rules and our regulations, so they're always questioning. So I just don't, I, I, it's gonna be, yeah, I don't know.
I think, I think the police chief would agree that we don't know what's meant to be, because the state doesn't know what they anticipate.
Right.
They've told us that they think that because it's free, people aren't gonna stay all day long.
Right.
I don't think if you drive down from Hartford, you're gonna go for half a day.
Exactly.
You know? They've told us that they're not gonna have defined lanes for entries, so like, you know, all state people go in one lane, all paying people go in another lane. They're just gonna let it be a free-for-all.
Free-for-all, great.
And I think that's gonna work. So, you know, I have no confidence at all in this whole plan moving forward. I think what, like I said this before, and I'll say it again, we're gonna protect our town throughout this whole thing. We're gonna make sure that our, that our private beaches remain private, and that our town beaches are, like Scott said, respected by those who use them, whether they be town people or outsiders. But we're all just, we're gonna, we're gonna have to be reactive. We have no choice.
Yeah.
But I think we're gonna, I think we're, you know, we're ready for whatever we, whatever happens, and so we'll deal with it.
Scott, when we originally set some of the fees for out-of-town residents to use our beaches, we roughly tied that to what the state was charging in Hammond Asset?
To, to an extent, yes.
Yeah. What's our philosophy currently as to how we set those fees?
I think we're fine where we are. Looking at other towns, we have to be careful on that threshold as far as over excessive fees, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna end up into the court system as much as Greenwich did, and Jeff Rosenberg, Eversource, did a very fine job maneuvering us through that. And we were just very careful not being exorbitant on those fees. I mean, we could go excessive, and I think that'll turn around the bias.
Could you show the current fee structure?
Right now, residents up to age 59 are $40 for their first car, $20 for each additional car. It's all tied to the age of the person that the car is registered to. And so senior citizen is $10, and it continues at 10, 10, 10. But if there's a senior citizen, and it's $10 because the car is registered, is her name, and there's a person that's under the age 59, and that car is registered to that person, it's $40. The guest, the daily guest tag for residents is $10, where people can buy their guests, $10 guest tags. They can have them on hand at their house, they can buy them in advance here. They can buy guest tags at the beach. We only take credit cards or checks at the beach, we don't take cash. Non-residents, Monday through Thursday, are $25 per carload. In Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, non-residents are $40 per car.
Any else?
Maybe just one last question around, we use the Surf Club for income and, you know, rentals of, you know, whether it's weddings or whatever. Do you have a sense of, you know, the trend? Are we, you know, is it increasing over time? Are we looking to increase it over time?
I think the building in itself is in need of, have we been working on this as far as renovation? Whereas, I think we're maxing out pretty much what we can get out of it in addition. We don't have, it's not heavy rental, or rented, I should say. We do limit it to residents and their sponsors. So somebody from the out-of-town can rent it as a facility. It is only rented on Fridays, during the beach past season, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Okay.
So, because we don't want to take away the parking from the beach, so.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Number six, discussing take action on proclamation in honor of Eagle Scout Matthew Mater. Scott, would you like to read that?
Yes. Whereas, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Madison hereby proudly acknowledged the outstanding award of Eagle Scout to a member of the Boy Scouts of America. Whereas, throughout his commitment to the community with a dedication of purpose and a commitment to a high level of leadership excellence worthy of acclamation and praise by this board and the entire community. Whereas, the board gratefully recognizes the tremendous efforts of this young man, is with great pride that the board officially extends their congratulations to this newly awarded Eagle Scout, and wishes him all of the best of luck in his future endeavors. Furthermore, that by the powers vested in the Board of Selectmen by the state of Connecticut and the Madison Charter, we, the members of this board, hereby unanimously acknowledge the scouting achievements of Matthew Mater, done this 12th day of March 2018 in the town of Madison, Connecticut.
Thank you. Want to approve the?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Discuss to take action to approve moving the regular meeting of Monday, April 22nd, 2018, to Tuesday, April 23rd, 2018.
And it should be 23rd to 24th. I had the dates wrong, so.
Okay.
Has a minute.
Let's discuss and take action on changing the dates, 22nd through the 23rd and 24th. I'll explain this.
So, well, so moved, did we do, did we have?
Yeah, go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
So, the reason is, somebody made vacation plans for me that doesn't get me back until that night, the 23rd, so.
I hate when somebody does that.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna say what it was.
Yeah.
But, so that's why I asked to do the change. Any other discussion?
Do we have, do we have other boards and commitments that night, do we know, on the 24th?
Board of Ed meets that night.
I think it's okay.
All right. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm ready to discuss Academy School process going forward, including a future public So, you know, at the last meeting, I think we all agreed that we wanted to hear from people, give more people an opportunity to chime in on what, on their feelings about Academy. And so at this point, I think we should schedule, I'd like to schedule one more public hearing. I don't think it hurts to keep this in the public perception and to, you know, talk about it a little bit more. I think, Lauren, what are our, you know, timing-wise, what do we need to look at as far as the next date?
So.
So notice that we have to be certain, notice it.
Yeah, so in order to notice that it will be able to go into the paper until next week, go back to March on this calendar, and I'll tell you. Go back to March on this calendar and I'll tell you the earliest you can have. The earliest you can have it is the week of April ninth. And that would be depending, it depends where you want, where you like to have it. Probably would suggest Pulsar.
Yeah, I think so.
You know, if we wanna do it here. So, we have a morning meeting on the ninth, that's our April morning meeting. That evening is the two-town committees and the Conservation Commission meets on the ninth. The tenth, eleventh look pretty open in the evening, or the twelfth has E B C.
Tenth, that's.
Tenth, that's B O A.
And Youth and Family Services.
B O A isn't on the town calendar, sorry. They don't put it on the town calendar.
Okay, so, it sounds like Wednesday, the eleventh.
The eleventh?
Yeah, Wednesday's actually pretty good, yeah.
All right, so let's.
I would suggest then opening the agenda to vote to call a public hearing on the eleventh and then making a backup date just in case Pulsar is not available.
Do we wanna use this to back-up date?
Well, it can't be the next week because I won't be here.
So, I move, we open the agenda for the purposes of adding a public hearing to Discuss Academy?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move, we add April eleventh? At seven-thirty, is that when we do it, or do we do it at seven?
Seven.
Seven, April eleventh, at seven o'clock P M at Pulsar?
Second.
And where would that be?
Pulsar.
Do you hope Pulsar is available?
She's gonna check.
Pending.
And I think it bears repeating, we've said it a couple of times here, but the notion of Island Avenue as another way to come at this is really not on the table for us to discuss until the Board of Education takes action on it. So, we know they're closing a school, but they have not indicated that they're giving the property back to the town. And that's a formal process they need to go through. So, the reality is, until they do some sort of action, it's not available for us to consider as a strategy. So, I encourage you to go to their meeting. I've done this before and they already hate me, so I'll do it again. Which will be canceled because it's tomorrow evening.
You're probably jinxing it.
No, no, it's not. Or on the twenty-seventh, I think that's their next meeting, if the thirteenth is not rescheduled. But it's a process roadblock that we don't have a way to get around.
Tom, how will we frame that public hearing? What's the question we're gonna put to the public or the issue? Are we just looking for the public's ideas on the future of the school?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what we heard last time was that there are different things and, you know, I think we'll find out how widespread the different opinions are, if they are.
Good, that's good.
And I think to add volume and quantity to the community opinions that are out there.
Right.
Yeah. That's great. Would it be possible to have, so not only the question and answer portion, but, you know, maybe some sort of a presentation, just a high-level review of the four options or maybe, you know, something relative to the survey feedback that was given, you know, some sort of just information that we can sort of tee off the conversation with and then get into public comment. John, break some.
Yeah, I think we talked to Dave Anderson about that, maybe help us put something together.
Sorry, Dave.
See, that's what happens when you don't pay attention to what's going on, you need it.
First I heard it, so.
How come he's sitting way, way back there?
Okay, so I don't think we took about, all in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, discuss to take action to approve the hiring of part-time dispatcher.
So moved.
Second.
Deb, do you wanna address this or? Oh, Dr. Reese, I'm following, let me see.
So, good morning. Our dispatcher candidate is Elizabeth Christian. She's currently a full-time dispatcher for the Town of East Haven. So, they run very similar system as we do with the same next-gen system, same CAD system. She's familiar with E N D, our medical dispatch system, and she currently dispatches police fire and EMS. So, all around, it's gonna be a really good fit. We hope it to be a very quick training process and get her up to speed very quickly. And with approval, she'll be starting to train as early as tomorrow.
Great. Part-time is about, roughly how many hours?
It's scheduled, right, it would be two days, two shifts we have open in our schedule right now. Due to some vacancies, we have as much as she could handle. And we are going through a full-time process as well. We started to talk to her before that process opened, so we continued her down the part-time path. She has applied for the full-time position, so once we get that up and running, we'll be able to gauge it from there.
Is she still employed at other locations?
She currently is, yeah. So, that would be between, if it fits for us and fits for her, then we make that offer.
I have a process question. Normally, we have some paperwork in front of us about this individual. Is it some reason we don't this morning?
No, it was with the storms. It was, we wanted to get this going quick because I was, I'm actually, I've been able to rebackground in about two weeks, pretty quick, and with the storms, Lauren and I weren't able to connect with the, but if you like, I mean, I can get a resume to board.
So, right now, you're just asking us to approve hiring a part-time dispatcher on a specific person?
No, a person.
The specific person.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
We can wait so long because we can't hire a specific person, I doubt we should have the process.
No, no, I was wrong. So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number ten, discuss and take act, this is a big one. Discuss and take action to allow cannon fire as part of the Ethan Club's overture during June thirtieth Council on the Green, pursuant to the code of ordinances down in Madison, section eight dash one fireworks.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have to say that in my younger life, it was my job to stick a starter's pistol in a fifty-five-gallon steel drum.
Really?
And that was the state-of-the-art cannon in Madison in the late seventies, so.
Sounds like you wanna light this one up.
Explains a lot.
I know.
It sure does.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number eleven, discuss and take action to accept responsible growth, to accept the responsible growth in Transit Oriented Development R G T O D grant in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars and to allow the first select to execute the same.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? This is for the Bradley Road sidewalk project?
Tom, my question was, the sister grant to this has to do with Tux's Walkway. And I was wondering what the status of that was.
That's basically in, what we call that production right now, it's, we're getting numbers together. Yeah, we're soliciting structural design firms to give us sort of an estimate on the rehabilitation required. We need to do like an inspection on the structure. So, we're in the process of putting out proposals, getting proposals for that.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number twelve, discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to transfer funds to the Debt Service Reserve Fund pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just remind me what this is.
Yeah, so, so this is, this was an attempt to hold our annual operating debt service funding flat by shifting some money around. We're coming off of, we're gonna be seeing a reduction in debt service, so a savings to that operating account. By pulling in some money out of the Special Reserve, it allows us to keep those payments flat from a tax perspective. And then as we roll off of the debt, we'll be able to replenish that amount. Did I get it right?
Pretty much, yeah, instead of seeing peaks and valleys because we have some debt coming off the books and we have some debt coming off the books. So, we could see some savings, the net of those two, about three or four years out. So, we wanted to smooth that savings out so that we wouldn't go up in years one and two and then go down in years three and four. So, we're smoothing out the debt service over the next four years.
And the net effect is, the net effect is taxpayers aren't gonna see an increase. We're gonna use money that we've already collected from taxpayers to pay this and we're just time-shift again.
Correct.
So, it's just moving it from one account to another? Is that basically what we're doing?
Pretty much, yeah.
For the non-finance guy?
Out of the fund balance and then paying ourselves back over the next four years. Basically, so we won't have peaks and valleys in our debt service, annual debt service payments.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number thirteen, related items, discuss and take action to call a special town meeting on Monday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen at six forty-five P M. The town campus will pay and approve a special appropriation request for the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to transfer funds to the Debt Service Reserve Fund pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved.
So moved.
Second. I'll be second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number fourteen, discuss the application for the Historic Document Preservation Program grant.
So, Nancy couldn't be here, she was actually not here today. But Liz is the grant that they apply for every year that helps them continue on with scanning in older historical documents that we have in the electronic record of that.
So, right now, all we have are originals and if anything happened to them, we would not have the document. So, this is just making archive copies.
There is no motion, so based on your due process, she just wanted to bring it to you to let us know that at the next meeting, she will bring it to you for a vote.
So, total is what, nine thousand dollars, is that what I'm saying?
And this is in the budget?
They budget for this every year, we apply for this every year and we've been through to the last four or five years.
Move that we approve seven hundred and eleven dollars for ballots.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number sixteen, discuss and take action to accept the reservation of Abigail Wade from the W P C A.
So moved with appreciation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seventeen, discuss and take action to approve the Summerhowers program schedule for the Town of Madison affecting town campus offices, excuse me, Madison Youth and Family and the Senior Center as follows, commencing May first and ending August thirty-first. Hours would be as follows, Monday to Wednesday, eight-thirty, eight-thirty A M to four P M, Thursday, eight-thirty A M to six P M, and Friday, eight-thirty A M to seven P M. The intended this action is to provide service to the public beyond the traditional workday hours by staying open late on Thursdays. After evaluation from the two thousand and seventeen pilot program, the recommendation is to begin the program one month earlier.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Tom, is there any changes from last year in terms of the hours or is this the hours that we work?
These are the same hours, just moving it to May first.
Yeah, that's.
Tom, whoever did the evaluation, I'd like to learn about why May was added to this schedule.
I think the biggest reason was probably beach passes. Because we start selling beach passes and when we opened up Memorial Day, it was already beach pass season. So, by doing it May first, we picked up the beach pass.
The line is out the door, I thought.
And so, people come on Thursday nights and get their.
Makes a lot of sense.
Okay?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eighteen, discuss and take action to approve the position of Council Clerk Three, salary grant seven, finance departments into the classified plan. The job description has been reviewed by the Job Valuation Committee. Position will replace an Council Clerk Two classification which became vacant due retirement. Funding exists to fill the vacancy within the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Tom, I don't know whether I should ask you or ask Stacy. I'm interested in the overall table of organization for, how does this fit into the general scheme of what's going on in the finance office?
So, the office is pretty much restructured the same. However, we shifted some more responsibilities to this position because this position had a thirty-year employee there that when she started missing time or was not present in the office, we realized of other efficiencies that could happen in that position and certain responsibilities that we can shift over to that position could be the, so the position has pretty much increased as far as the level of responsibilities. So, we're looking at our current town Accounts Payable Clerk, which is the next agenda item to move over to this position. This is a Board of Ed Accounts Payable Clerk. And then we're also looking to hire, to go out, to hire somebody to replace a payroll person who will move over into the town's Accounts Payable position. So, the structure is the same, responsibilities have been shifted and increased, especially for this position.
And which of these job descriptions will be doing the Accounts Payable for the town itself?
That position is not changing.
Okay, so the status and couch remains the same?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Number nineteen, discuss and take action to officially reclassify Jeanette Holdridge to the position of Council Clerk Three, finance, effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty, discuss and take action to approve the job description changes to the position Director of Public Works to Director of Public Works slash Town Engineer into the classified plan. The job descriptions have been reviewed by the Job Valuation Committee, no change in salary. The new job description combines the duties of Town Engineer to Director of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'd just like to comment on this. When I first started here, this is the way things were set up. Town Engineer and Public Works were the same person who had that title. And we found out that there were problems. When I first started, we got a lot of calls about Public Works being unresponsive, not doing things that were requested, not returning phone calls. We had a bunch of different problems. So, what we did was we split the position at that time to accommodate the person who was in it at their agreement and, you know, with our agreement. And so, John, who had been the Assistant Public Works, Director of Public Works, became the Director of Public Works interim, on an interim basis. We wanted to try that, see how that was gonna work. It worked very well. John's done a great job in that position and, you know, we've had a chance to see him do whatever we need to be done. The other thing is when we first started, when I first started here, there were two licensed engineers. When our former Town Engineer resigned, we were down to one. In the meantime, Rob has gotten his license, and so now we're back up to two licensed engineers. Good work, Rob. So, going forward, we've had a chance to work these two jobs together. We saw the benefit of recombining them, putting them back in. And, you know, if I look at where things are today compared to where they were when I first started, the department runs better, the citizens are a lot happier, a lot of projects getting done by talent, by Public Works. I get a lot of comments from people. It used to be that I'd get calls that people were complaining that they weren't hearing back from Public Works. I actually get calls from people now saying, thank you for being responsive, thank you for taking care of the things that needed to be done. We had a big backlog in our permit system because there was a bottleneck in the engineering department. They've cleaned that up. We had projects that were unfinished and these projects are getting finished. And, you know, they're not all finished, but we've made a lot of progress in getting things done in the last nine months. So, I'm very happy to make this recommendation to the board that we recombine jobs, make John the, that's the next motion, but that this is the appropriate thing to do at this time.
So, this was, you know, a little bit of an experiment for us back when you, when you brought it up and we've got, what, nine, nine or so months under our belts? And I think at the time, we heard from other staff, you know, other department heads that everybody was rallying around the work to make sure that it all got done. And I guess maybe that would be a good check back for us, is that still the case? Is, do we, do we still have that department head interdepartmental cooperation going? Is, are our internal customers being taken care of?
And initially, you know, everybody was kind of pitching in, trying to carry the load. They're carrying the load now, I'm not doing much at all.
Can they hear your budget?
But no, I think it's an excellent working relationship and it counts it all. I would definitely recommend that you move forward as proposed.
I will say that one of the things that I like about this setup is that it's going to rely, I think, on some outside engineering consulting work as part of its core strategy. I like that we're going to be able to keep some arms length from that engineering work and then you two will have the opportunity to look objectively and critically at the plan and manage it through its process rather than be the authors of that work and then feel like you have to defend it. So I think there's a certain elegance built into this structure that will work to the town's advantage.
And we're finding that, for instance, with this Texas walkway, you know, bringing in an outside firm to basically engineer for us to make sure that, you know, we get the job done right. And leaves them free to do the things that they need to do. Any other discussion?
Does this model contemplate that, is one of you going to spend more time on public works or engineering than the other? I mean, is, who should the public call? Public has a public works issue. Is there?
I like that answer, Tom. My administrative assistant will be the person answering the phone call. But no, I'm the town, you know, presumably I'm the town engineer and public works director. I'll be answering the phone calls if it's an engineering question or if it's a public works question. Pretty much the way things have been for a long time now.
And Rob, there is backup, you know, if John should be out around the road or whatever, I've seen these guys working together and I'm very impressed with the relationship that they've developed. They constantly are in each other's office, you know, talking about different things and keeping each other up on what's going on. And I'm really pleased with the progress, Rob. I mean, Rob was kind of an assistant at one point and since getting his license, he's actually before getting his license, but he's done a great job taking over this job and, you know, doing what needs to be done. I think, I think John would agree with that.
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
So was it June of seventeen or July of seventeen when we started this?
July.
And so it was always towards an eye towards this. And Deb, when you presented the budget, it was with an eye towards this actually happening. So the budget that we contemplated had this structure in it, right?
Yes, Deb.
I'm not sure I understand or agree with that point candidly. I always thought when my god, our former town engineer left, that the implication was going to be that we would consider all options, that we weren't looking at one particular model, that, you know, there might be an opportunity to outsource engineering, there might be, you know, the idea of looking outside, whether or not we had the skills internally. I guess I'm not understanding that point.
I think that's exactly what we're doing. We've, we've come up with a working model here in town that where these guys are doing all the work that they need to do and can handle. And then we go outside for more project planning type work as opposed to having them design build.
No, I understand that. I totally understood that. What I just heard Bruce say was that as of July seventeenth, we had an eye towards this particular model and we've been working towards this particular model, which I'm, I guess I'm somewhat surprised with. I thought that we were considering all models or.
Well, I think we were, but this is, this is a model that's consistent with towns of our size. Deb, am I right?
Correct.
It's pretty much.
Yeah, this is, this is very standard. The, in most of the towns that we did the survey on, either the director is an engineer or there is an engineer within the department of public works. We have them too. You know, so again, this is very standard. One of the things too, just to bring up, I think it was a good point that was brought up by the JEC, is that you have John and Rob available to perform engineering tasks, but they're not going to be doing the breadth of the projects like perhaps we had with the downtown center project. And the point was made that that was good. Because if there are projects that are that large and there is an error or an omission in that project, that engineering firm has liability insurance. Our employees do not. So if there's an error from our employee standpoint, unfortunately, the town just has to find the money in its coffers to make that project correct. So that's where there was a positive to looking to still have a high breadth where you have some engineering work being done in-house and the larger scale projects being part of the bigger project.
And I think that last summer, the idea was that this, this looks like the obvious path. Let's give it a try and if it doesn't, then I think we, you know, we were going to be open to alternate, alternate strategies. But, you know, specifically Tom had identified a new position that he wanted us to contemplate if this could work out for us because it effectively saves us a position. And it was around the materials acquisition purchasing type of thing that would hopefully be town and school district combined, so to make us more efficient on that. So I think that was, you know, that was part of the original plan that I heard from Tom last year and. And yeah, had it not worked out, had we been sitting here and talking about, you know, this isn't, this isn't working out the way we'd hoped, then I think we would have to, we would have to be adjusted.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, you know, bigger picture here. I guess, you know, to your point of the procurement officer too, I sort of wish that we've had more of an opportunity to discuss and I, you know, I'll bring it back to our process point and set, but, you know, discuss the organizational structure in its full context. So I think, you know, was it six months ago, there was a conversation about a procurement manager and I haven't heard anything about it since. No job description, no further, furthering the process. And if that is, you know, in conjunction with this change, then I think we need to have the bigger picture and the strategy of kind of the direction we're going.
It's not in conjunction with this change. It was an opportunity for funding and then the state cut our budget, so that opportunity is on hold right now. I mean, I would love to have been able to talk about adding a purchasing agent, but we lost a million or two or whatever it is from the state. And so, you know, we just had to, we have to look where we can save that.
And this was, I mean, as far as the budget process, when we started the budget workshops, I mean, this was an assumption that was made that this would, you know, that these two positions would basically be.
Yeah, I'd like to jump in here. My comments have nothing to do with the model that we're currently using. My comments don't have anything to do with the individuals that are involved. I'm feeling like we're being presented with a model without any prior discussion as to whether this is the correct model of staffing to move ahead with. We've talked at this table many times over the last few years about looking for every opportunity, for example, to regionalize or to work with other towns on some of our key positions and key services. And we never had a discussion at this table before we've been presented with this particular model about whether there are other models that we should be considering. And so I don't have any problem with what the job evaluation committee has done. I don't have any problem with the individuals. I'm having a problem with the process here that we as a board of selectmen never discussed whether there are other tables of organization which we might utilize for our engineering department. And so I'm feeling like we're being presented at the end of the process with only a single option and there may have been other options to consider. That's my frustration this morning. It's not with the individuals. I need you guys to hear that.
Yeah, I guess I want to build on that point because I'm feeling the exact same way. I would prefer in this particular situation to have a discuss versus a discuss and take action. I did comment on that, you know, prior to the meeting and kind of put forward my concern there. You know, again, zero disrespect to the individuals in the room about your capabilities and your job, but I feel like as a selectman, I need to be presented with sort of the strategy, the organizational structure, the sort of the why we're doing this and make sure it understands, I understand sort of the history of, you know, why this position is changing. At the end of the day, we made a decision to change it for a reason and now we're taking, you know, both sets of job requirements and putting them back together. And, you know, I have to admit, I'm mildly concerned that, you know, can one individual as the town engineer and the director of public works, again, no disrespect to you, John, can it be done by one person? It seems like a ton of work just from a, you know, an outsider's perspective. So it just seems like from a process perspective, we should have the opportunity to discuss something before we take action on it, especially something of this magnitude.
So we have discussed it many times over the past year and a half because this whole thing started when, in June of twenty sixteen. But, I mean, if John wants to address or Rob wants to address your ability to handle the workload.
Well, you know, I don't think it is one individual. I think it's, it's two individuals, just Rob and myself. I'll be the, you know, the prime as the, as presumably as a town engineer and public works director. But Rob, Rob's a professional engineer as well and very capable. So, you know, I feel that between the two of us, we'll continue to do the job, you know, that's been done in the past in this town, you know, we'll carry that on.
So, I mean, from my perspective, this isn't the first or even the second time we've talked about this. This is, I totally disagree. I think directly on this conversation, it is absolutely the first time. But when we, when we put this temporary structure in place, these concerns weren't there. When we discussed the budget, these concerns weren't there. We are, we're not building some novel structure here. We're returning to a structure that we had for years and years and years. We don't have a net decrease.
That was changed for a reason though. It was changed for a reason. So in fairness, and I'm not sure all the reasons are being conveyed completely here, but at the end of the day, I think it was changed for a reason. So we, so there needs to be a real reason to change it back.
It was changed to accommodate an individual. And we don't have to accommodate the individual anymore.
I don't agree with that, but, okay.
That's, that's your opinion.
It is.
But I've worked through it and these guys have worked through it. And that was the case.
So I don't think we're breaking any ground here. We don't have a net reduction in qualified staff. We, we had two licensed engineers, we have two licensed engineers. If anything, we've reduced the overall workload because we're seeing specifically the bigger engineering contracts, projects are going to go out.
Bruce, I'm not disagreeing with anything you said. You're using the pronoun "we" and "we" is not feeling like it's including me.
And me. I don't feel like I've had any substantive conversations about recombining this role. It may have been implied in budget conversations. It has never been explicitly discussed as a body. And I think in fairness to the board of selectmen, we should be able to have a candid conversation.
That's what we're doing right now.
Right. But then we're now being forced to act on it directly in the same meeting, which I don't, I'm not comfortable with.
I don't know how many times we have to talk about things before we can make a decision about them. I mean, this, we've got a track record that shows us working. We're doing, we're going through the process the way we should go through the process. I think that this is extraneous conversation to just drag things up. And I think what we need to do is we need to act on it. It's my opinion.
I think that's disrespectful personally, but, okay.
Any further discussion? I'm going to ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Opposed?
I'm going to, I'm going to vote against this. I'm not voting against the model, I'm not voting against the individuals. My vote is against the process that has led us to this point, so I'm going to vote no.
So we have three, one, one. Okay. Number twenty, discuss to take action to officially reclassify John Ianaco to the position of director of public works slash town engineer, effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I have the same, exact, same exact point as you last time. So I would, I'm going to abstain in my voting for reasons of process.
Any further discussion?
I'm going to vote no against reasons of process.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstain?
Yep.
Okay. Number twenty-two, discuss to take action to approve the job description of deputy director of public works slash assistant town engineer, salary grade thirteen into the reclassified plan. The job description has been reviewed by the job evaluation committee. Funding currently exists within the budget to support the inclusion of the position and appointment due to the resignation of director of engineering services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
Yay.
Okay. Number twenty-three, discuss to take action to officially reclassify Robert Russo to the position of deputy director of public works slash assistant town engineer, effective July first, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I have the same, same process issue here.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Opposed?
I'm going to oppose. Reasons of process.
Number twenty-four, discuss to take action to approve the job description of executive assistant slash risk manager, salary grade nine, into the classified plan. The job description has been reviewed by the job evaluation committee. The reassignment of risk management responsibilities is necessitated by the retirement of director of town services. Funding currently exists within the budget to support the increase in salary.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
So it probably is worth saying that this is, this is our reshuffling of responsibilities due to Alma's retirement. So as we've looked to replace her where we need to and absorb some of her responsibilities on others, this is, this is the execution on that and Lauren landed with the hot potato on this one. You're it.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Number twenty-five, discuss to take action to officially reclassify Lauren Ryanes to the position of executive assistant slash risk manager, effective on March first, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty-six, discuss to take action to approve the job description of HR generalist, salary grade seven, into the classified plan. Funding currently exists within the budget to support the increased responsibilities and promotion.
Second.
Discussion? I'd just like to say, I've watched this position grow since I've gotten here. The wellness plans that you guys have come up with have been really, I think, really effective and I think we're seeing that in our health insurance premiums remaining flat this year. I hope that's part of it. But this and other things that this position has been asked to do, they've been tremendously productive. All in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty-seven, discuss to take action to officially reclassify Paula Carabetta to the position of HR generalist, effective to January first, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Is this in the budget?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number twenty-eight, discuss to take action to approve the hiring of William Luffsey to this position of per diem bus driver located in the senior center. Position is exempt. Rate of pay is fourteen eighty-seven per hour. Position is budgeted, not requiring incorporation of funds. Position vacancy was created by resignation.
He gets a new bus to drive, doesn't he?
We have a new bus, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Tax abatements and refunds.
You don't see any in here.
There are none.
There are none.
So moved.
Citizens Commons, number thirteen. We've all gone.
Yes.
Oh.
Good morning.
Yes, yes. It is. Okay, thank you. Susan Glan, six eighty-two, Central Road. I would like to express hope this morning that the fracking waste ordinance will be given its due. I believe it is still scheduled for March twenty-sixth along with the Concord Meadows Small Cities. Susan Glan, 682 Central Road. I would like to express hope this morning that the fracking waste ordinance will be given as due. I believe it is still scheduled for March 26, along with the Concord Meadows Small Cities application and a town now, as I understand it, a town meeting item in addition all at the same time. Please don't give this short shrift or underestimate its importance. There is a lot of support for this ordinance, hundreds of citizens, as we have seen in prior meetings. Also, there is opposition, amazingly enough, to having a ban on the fracking waste as written in letters to the editor in the source, which I hope you have seen. So please allot a sufficient amount of time to have proper, full and open public review of this ordinance. The public is due an expert presentation on this topic so that people fully understand the ordinance. And the public needs to see the actual wording of the revised ordinance prior to the public hearing, which is scheduled two weeks from now. It is also quite possible that this room might not be large enough to accommodate all the people that will attend for the many items you have scheduled for the public hearing and the town meeting all together the same evening. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I wonder if we could just respond, if we could ask Lauren, what are the logistics and arrangements for that meeting?
So the public hearing on the 26 starts at 6:30 PM. If there are a lot of people here that want to make comment, we would then adjourn to the special town meeting, I believe that's 6:45. So we would adjourn to the special town meeting. If there is a quorum, then we would open the town meeting. And if there is no quorum, then the town meeting item passes without having time for questions and answers.
Not 75 people, right?
That's 75 people for a forum at a town meeting, correct? Which has not happened in quite some time. But if it does, we would then adjourn, we can adjourn back to the public hearing. So if there are more people who haven't had a chance to speak, we'll adjourn back to the public hearing. Your normal meeting, your regular meeting starts at 7 PM. And again, if there's still a line at the door for people to speak at the public hearing on the fracking ordinance, we would adjourn to the regular meeting, open that up, and then you can adjourn back to the public hearing to continue hearing comments. So there is a process in place where we can go kind of back and forth if we need to, if there is more time needed. We wouldn't cut anyone off from the public hearing to start the regular meeting and, you know, not listen to everyone who did come up to attend the public hearing. I think there was comment made about when the draft ordinance would be available. It has been available since your last meeting when you called the public hearing. It is on the website, and a copy of it also went out through the email subscription service. So if you're subscribed to get updates from the website, you got it that way. But it is available on the website, has been for quite some time. If you would like a paper copy, you can call me in the First Selectmen's Office or the Town Clerk's Office also has paper copies available. I think that's it.
Great, thank you.
Tom, one more question. I'm going to direct this one to you. There was some commentary in the past... No, I was drawing. I'm sorry.
All set. Okay, number 31, Liaison Reports Selectmen's Comments.
Oh my God, number 31. Have we had a longer agenda?
Yeah, you have.
I didn't even turn it over. I didn't realize. I don't have any.
We still have to go to an executive session, too. Anybody got anything important?
Well, the Library Building Committee, they voted to pass the design, the initial design. So there's some excitement, I think, around moving forward there. Yeah.
Okay. Number 32, Executive Session, having a motion?
Move that we go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. Lauren, are you going to speak?